Call this meeting in order with the pledge of allegiance.
Donahue. Donahue absent. Hawley.
Here.
Hawley here. Farenwald. Farenwald absent. Osling. Osling here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Pullos. Pullos here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Vieda. Vieda absent. Rita. Rita absent. Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the dates of February 26, 2019. Do I have a motion? By Alden Carr, second. By Alden Thompson.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr. Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment.
Uh-oh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
And of course, we're talking about the appropriations and what's been going on with our Blue Island taxpayer dollars. The 2019 appropriation is still muddy, messy, and unclear. Blue Island should never be operating from a wish list when a well-thought-out city budget is what is needed. The Blue Island 2019 appropriation reflects lots of wasteful spending for service fees, bond fees, and bloated figures. The Chicago water costs have actually decreased, not increased, meaning water sales have decreased. Myers and Marzelle were dishonest when they selected the communities for comparables for their water rate presentation. Most of those communities do not get their water from Chicago. They get their water from a second-party payer. Alsup is the only community that gets all of their water from Chicago, and in fact, Alsup is a far wealthier community than Blue Island will ever be. Blue Island's share of property taxes has decreased. Cook County dispatch service fees are completely missing from the 2018 information. Drug forfeiture funds are also not reflected in the 2019 appropriation under police. Salaries have increased, and unemployment taxes increased to $1,881 from zero. Emergency management has increased $50,000. Costs for the rec center have skyrocketed from $11,000 up to $127,000 appropriated for 2019. The Meadows has also increased. Together, these things are costing Blue Island taxpayers more. Abandoned homes have cost $145,000, with $50,000 being covered by a grant. Blue Island's share of video poker is not clearly reflected anywhere in the ordinance for 2018. The state of Illinois video gaming report reflects Blue Island has 29 establishments with 131 video poker machines, five video poker machines at the Meadows. The city of Blue Island's share for 2018 is $51,012.87. The state's share is $255,064.95. A clear ordinance should have been written for the Blue Island City Council aldermen consideration before approval. There's been no substantial follow-up effort to eliminate the increases to the Blue Island 2019 ordinance to an amount that the city of Blue Island is actually going to receive in revenue. That whole ordinance is just so bloated, it's ridiculous. Cuts must be made in addition to reversing the increases padded into the 2019 ordinance to better meet the city of Blue Island's actual revenue. Therefore, it remains recommended that all 14 aldermen vote no or to table the 2019 Blue Island appropriation ordinance until the Blue Island aldermen have all the critical data and information and an appropriation in line with actual revenue to vote in the best interest of the city of Blue Island and its constituents. No monies, no substantial monies, has been given to roadways since, for six years, all of you, every last one of you, were elected under the Blue Island Independent Party, every last one of you. You've been promising to fix the streets. From what I understand, eight miles have been fixed. That's it. That's all. What about the rest of Blue Island? Every time it's election time, we hear about, "We're going to fix the roadways." You're telling people what they want to hear, but then you get elected, and you're not doing it. You've got to fix that because people are really angry, and they're very upset. And it's time to make these corrections. For those of you who are not running again, I understand. You must be frustrated and ready to go home. I get it. You have to be tired. How many years you been doing this, Jan, Nancy, Mr. Pittman, Mr. Pullos? How many years have you been hearing about promises to take care of this stuff? So far, you haven't really put a big dent in this stuff. It's time because people are very unhappy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for not telling me three minutes are up, Mayor.
Your three minutes are up. We'd like the Ike Bicycle, Blue Island.
This shirt is for sale through the Chamber of Commerce if you're interested. Blue Island Chamber of Commerce, we're excited about the trail coming through. So if you want one, you can grab one on blueislandchamber.org. But that's not the reason that I'm here. So I'm Sarah Brown. I'm the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce in Blue Island, 2434 Vermont Street, or otherwise known as upstairs, the office. We also have a pop-up office right now at the Blue Island Historical Society on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m., and that address is 13018 Maple Avenue. So the reason I'm here today is to just share some information about some upcoming events that I think would be good to note. A lot of them, we've been working with you all on to try to coordinate, but there are some other things that will be coming with soon. March 30th is the Best of Blue Island Awards, which is a chance to recognize the men, women, business owners, and volunteers who make our city so great. It is a popular vote competition, and it is something that's open to anyone. We did have a great increase in participation this year. That said, I want to make it better because I know a lot of you didn't have a chance to be a part of it. But for those of you who could and did, thank you, and I hope you can join us March 30th at Beggar's for that banquet. The other things that we have coming forward are another lunch-and-learn event. We'd like to thank Howard Kopari from the city for joining the chamber this last month for an event, and we'll be having him back on April 11th for a follow-up. And beyond that, June 1st is the Park District Dragon Boat Festival, and I believe this will be the fourth or fifth year for the festival. It might be fifth. Fourth or fifth year for the festival. And so the exciting thing is that the rates to enter as an individual or as a team are the lowest they've ever been. So if you're curious about doing it, I encourage you to try it this year. It's a great chance. I'll be out there on the water again this year, so I'm pretty competitive. So come on, let's go. Let's have some friendly wagers here. Yes, Nancy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Will the tickets be picked up at the door for March 30th?
Yes, and I, yeah, and I did, I got you, I wrote you back. I don't know if you got it, that I do have your reservation for the event. Thank you so much. And then if you'd like to just give me your guest name when you have a chance, I'd be happy to add that to the list. Thank you. We have a golf outing, June 5th, at the Meadows. So I'd love for everyone to come out and join us for that. It's a fun day at a course right here in Blue Island. And then finally, I think one of the biggest things that I'd like to share is that the Drive in the Dixie, which I think is going to be in its 18th year this year, there are so many people that worked on this event in Blue Island over the years, and we're always hopeful that we could reverse the route and have it end in Blue Island. And so we're happy to announce that we are, we did accomplish that objective, and for the first time in the history of the event, the route will be from Moments, Illinois, and end in Blue Island at around 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock that Saturday afternoon when our businesses are open, when things are happening in the city. We have a vintage baseball game happening that day. We're going to have a festival that day. And we love all of your involvement and input on how we can really maximize that event. It's going to be a great chance to show off Blue Island, and every other year, it will end in Blue Island going forward. And that was with the support of all the other 12 communities that participate. They were excited about it and encouraged about it, so I hope you are too. But before I leave, none of that is possible if we don't, you know, get through the now and what's happening. And very realistically, the, if we don't have a Western Avenue Bridge that's operable, we can't do the Drive in the Dixie because that's where it crosses. And it's, there are a lot of urgent matters that face us today, but that bridge is the scariest thing I think I've ever encountered. I think the mayor talked about it last month in the forum. I know a lot of you have been talking about it. I know it was approved to be worked on this year. I understand it's getting a little tied up. So now I'm asking us, all of us. Everyone here. Take a picture. I'm going to be sharing some pictures from the chamber of some of the damage and some of the work that needs to be done. Hashtag look up. You can share my post. You can, you know, contact anyone else, anyone you can. It's terrifying, and I think that that's the scariest thing. There are a lot of other things too, but we trust and believe that the very best is going to be done for our city, and we thank you for your service. I thank everyone in the city for all that you do to help make everything that we do great. There are a lot of exciting things on the horizon, and I look forward to getting there in one piece with a bridge and all the other delightful things that we come to know and love in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Just in reference to the bridge, the city has sent out, from my office, four letters, not only to IDOT, but to the MWRD. And as you know, we had the president of MWRD here yesterday, and we informed her about the situation, whatever is disputed as to property rights or whatever underneath that bridge. And then we told them and we showed them the pictures that it's critical that that bridge, that work be done ASAP.
Sure. And I know that we're one of many across, it's an entire nation of infrastructure. I mean, this is something that we're facing, but I think if, as a resident of Blue Island, this is, this is really, really critical right now. So I know together, you know, squeaky wheel will get that grease. Let's, let's work together and try to get this expedited. But thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Drive in the Dixie is June 15th. It takes off from Moments. The cars will leave between 9:00 and 10:00 in the morning there. We expect them to arrive in Blue Island between 2:00 and 3:30. We'll be working with the city on the route, but we will be directing them to the ballfield at James, is it James and Anne Streets where we play the vintage baseball games down by Council Montessori? There's going to be a Blue Island Brewmaster Vintage Baseball Game. And if you're not familiar, that's a baseball team sponsored by the Historical Society. They play by the rules of 1858. It's free and open to everyone to join us there. We're also going to have some music, some food, and there's a kind of a festival atmosphere with all the participants that, that show up there in town. From there, we're going to be sending them back out into town to hopefully shop, eat, enjoy all that we have to offer for the first time while everything's open. So we're really excited. And again, any, any input ideas for that event to make it the best that we very, you know, that we can? I really encourage you to write the chamber, email me, call me. It's going to take our entire city to make it happen, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, we move on to port of city officials, presentations, resolutions. And here's an announcement, non-city court's business?
No business.
Any bids?
No bids, Your Honor.
City treasurer.
Corporate authority sure received the end reconciliation statement on the bank ending February 28, 2019. The emotion?
The emotion. By Alden Osling, do I have a second? By Alden Carr, any questions? Row call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, secondly, the transfer of unrestricted and restricted funds, a total of $542,308.67. Need a motion, please?
Need a motion by Alden Osling, second by Alden Hawley. Any questions?
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, I want to inform the corporate authority of certain concerns that I've had financially for the city. Last March 1st, two Fridays ago, I met with committee chair Osling, alderman Tom Hawley, Ms. Hunt. Mr. Marzelle was absent because he was sick, and then Mr. Myers was there, and I discussed somewhat in brief, and some other things were discussed about the financial situations I'm concerned about the city. First of all, the audit of '17, we were $268,000 approximately in the red. '18, we don't know yet. We're working on the audit right now. It'd be in the process. Appropriation I was concerned with because this year I was not that totally involved in it as, as I was in '18. The audit, we're going through the audit right now. As much as I can be assistant with Mr. Marzelle and whatever Mr. Kasparik needs through the office, we're going to work with him. The pension funds, the fire and police, I'm sure we all have been talking about that. You all, we're all aware of that, so I'm not going to go into detail. Reserves for the corporate fund. Mr. Myers made a presentation that we don't have enough reserves in the corporate fund, also in the water fund, same thing. Since we're self-insured for liability, we're supposed to have a reserve for that. So even though the city can't afford it, that's an issue. The pay increases that took it for the police, but not, there's still negotiation for the fire and, and for the public works and whatever else. How that impacts the corporate fund and throughout the year through the city, we have some basic ideas what the impact is, but not completely. The lawsuits that we're going to be paying, starting for three and a half years, starting in April, the first payment, and paying back at the tax anticipation warrant. $250,000 due April 15th. The closing of the TIF, TIF III, that's still an issue, and we're waiting for some legal advisor, and Mr. Horvath's working on that, I presume, so we can get some legal opinion on that, to which we've been asking for for a while. And the bottom line is, the basic economic, whatever comes in, less goes out. That's the basic concept of economics, if you want to make money or stay in business. If there's any further questions that you want to address to me or through the finance chair or through Mr. Marzelle, feel free to contact. We can update you more in detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City attorney?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. There is one ordinance on the agenda for this evening. Ordinance number 2019-006, an ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019.
Do you hear the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead. Make a motion to table. Got a motion? Do you have a second? By Alden Pullos. Row call.
Yes. Motion is to table. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Osling.
No.
Osling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Eight ayes and two noes to table, Your Honor.
To table. Thank you. Anything else?
At some point in time, this has to be passed.
By the end of the month.
By the end of, it has to get filed with the county by the end of the month.
I got a request on, can I get a, one email with the final, the final, final, final version sent to me tomorrow so I can review the thing again? Because I've gotten several emails, I'm sure the whole council has, since the last time I reviewed it, and that's why I made the motion to table it. I want to know exactly what I'm looking at. I know other aldermen have mentioned concerns. Even when we went through the first version, we didn't have the version from the day before. So I'm in the middle of evaluations. I'm sure everybody else is busy also too. And I started looking through the first couple of emails that came through, and I'm wondering what's been changed. Even if it's nothing, I still want to review it, and we got to the end of the month anyway.
Well, I just want to point that out because April 1st.
Yeah, no, we got to all get the final version appropriations email to us. Mr. Marzelle, can that be provided? Thank you. Alden, go ahead.
I just want to say, I have been asking questions, emailing questions since February the 8th, and there are still things that I haven't gotten answers on that I think are very important questions.
All right, sit in tables, and we'll get that information. Next. Committee reports. Committee development.
No report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 19th, following the finance committee meeting.
All right, finance committee?
Finance committee met on March 5th. We did not have a quorum. All of the aldermen have received the accounts payable and the payroll in their packet. The accounts payable for March 13th, 2019, is $477,757.35.
You making that a motion?
I'm not making a motion.
Okay.
I need a motion and a second.
Is there a motion and a second? Motion by Alden Hawley, second by Alden Frausto. Any questions? Row call, please.
Hawley. Aye.
Hawley, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
The next thing is the payroll for February 22nd, 2019, and the amount of $340,550.95. Again, I need a motion and a second.
We have the same, Alden Bellato, motion, second by Alden Pittman. Any questions? Row call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato. Bellato, aye. Nine ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Oh, that's all. Our next meeting is February, or March.
Tuesday, March 19th.
March 19th, 7:00 East Danix.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Ah, yes, Your Honor. I've got the minutes from the meeting of February the 12th. Present were Chief LaSalle King, Chief Danaria, Alderman Kevin Donahue, Alderman Ken Pittman, and myself. Absent were Chief Don Marshbanks, Deputy Chief Arzab, Alderman Dexter Johnson. Also in attendance, oh, and Alderman George Pulis. Also in attendance was Treasurer Carmine Bellato. The meeting was called to order at 6:02. There were no citizens' concerns under the fire department. There were 200 EMS calls, 134 fire responses, 12 auto aid responses, and two mutual aid responses. Medical reimbursement services collected were $36,057.43 for the month of January. Fire recovery received in January was $1,044, and false fire alarm fees collected were $100. Under cause of interest, on January 2nd, at 2345 Florence, there was a car into the building. It resulted from the driver having a heart attack. On January 15th, there was a mutual aid to Crestwood for a structure fire that was contained to the top floor of a three-story apartment building. On January 28th, there was auto aid to Robbins for a structure fire. Under general information, union negotiations are ongoing. Three safer grant hires are being processed and will be on shift March 4th. Under maintenance, ambulance 2162 is still out of service, and Chief Rita spoke to Poseon about obtaining one of their ambulances. They are willing to exchange the ambulance for two occurrences of street sweeping with for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. An ordinance providing an appropriation for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019.